With COVID-19 health precautions, this public hearing is being held online. Written public comment may also be submitted to Rules Coordinator SBE at K12.wa.us. Please enter your name and if applicable, any affiliated organizations in the Zoom chat box for those who wish to provide feedback on the proposed rules at this public hearing. The chat window is only to sign up for public comment. Please do not put your comments in chat. Written comments may be submitted by email. If there are persons who wish to give oral comment on these proposed rules, opportunity to do so will be provided at this time. You will be given. Can I get an update on how many participants are in the chat room?
Seventy-five, Parker.
Thank you. You will be given one minute of time for your public comment per individual on these proposed rules. An on-screen timer will alert you to the time remaining for your public comment. If others have presented the same talking points as you, you do not need to repeat the public comment. If you have a written copy of your comments that you would like to submit, again, you can submit them to Rules Coordinator SBE at K12.wa.us. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. Closed captions are available to those of you connecting via Zoom. In the event we are unable to hear you clearly due to connection issues, we will ask you to please submit your comments in writing, again, to Rules Coordinator SBE at K12.wa.us. Here is a brief overview of the proposed changes to Chapter 18090 WAC regarding private schools. The purpose of this rule on Chapter 18090 WAC is to clarify policy and establish administrative procedures regarding loss of private school approval. The rulemaking clarifies that private schools must comply with state law, including all applicable health and safety requirements, and that noncompliance may result in suspension or rescission of approval. The private school emergency rules provide for additional definitions, clarification of the reasons for possible loss of private school approval, a brief adjudicative hearing process before a hearing officer on whether the private school should lose its approval, an initial decision with a written statement of the reasons for the decision issued by the hearing officer, an administrative review process for the initial decision, an emergency summary suspension of private school approval if there is a reasonable basis to believe there is immediate danger to the health, safety, or welfare of the private school students, staff, or others, right of a private school to request a hearing on the summary suspension to determine whether the suspension should be continue or be less restrictive in scope, modification of annual certification of compliance process to align with current practice and for consistency with loss of approval standards. I will now summarize the Small Business Economic Impact Statement that was collected from private school representatives. The full copy of the Small Business Economic Impact Statement is available in the Washington State Register publication 22-03-098, along with the rest of the rule filing. It is estimated there would be little to no additional cost of the proposed rules on most private schools. Currently, a private school's approval by the state.
Parker, you muted.
Thank you. When did the mute occur?
Prior to a private school.
Okay. So currently, a private school's approval by the State Board of Education requires compliance with current law, and the State Board of Education has the ability to rescind a private school's approval for noncompliance. The proposed rules provide clarification on that process. The added administrative procedures provide additional due process. The State Board of Education anticipates that the use of these procedures will be infrequent because most compliance issues are resolved informally. It is indeterminate whether the impact of the proposed rules would be disproportionate for small versus large private schools. A survey of private school representatives indicated that nine of the 12 respondents estimated no cost or indeterminate cost. Three respondents were concerned that the rules would involve additional record-keeping, administrative, or professional services costs. I'm now bringing up the online timer. I do not see any persons having entered in their name and affiliated organization to the chat box. First up is Susie Hanson from the Washington Federation of Independent Schools. Thank you for your public comment. We'll begin the timer when you've been speaking. Yes, we will unmute you. Stephanie, would you mind doing so? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your the ability to speak at this public hearing. My name is Susie Hanson. I work for the Washington Federation of Independent Schools. I want to say thank you to the State Board of Education for your thoughtful additions to this rule. I think that the process has been thorough and coming up with due process for the rescinding approval and also reinstating approval was really important. And although in a time where we hope that we don't have to use this rule, if we do, we feel like it's fair and we have a way to communicate with the board in order to make amends or change the status as needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. At the moment, I do not see any other names or affiliated organizations entered into the chat box.
Cindy Davis.
Cindy. I apologize. I arrived late. I'm really just here to listen and learn. I don't have any comments or questions at this time.
Thank you. If any other persons would like to provide public comment, please enter your name and affiliated organization, if applicable, into the chat box. I see that there is a raised hand among the participants. Please enter your name and affiliated organization, if applicable, into the chat box. I see a question in the chat box. I'll respond to that before calling on the next person. Just as a reminder, the chat box is primarily for providing your name for public comment. But the official deadline for public comment is the time of this hearing. However, the board does practice hearing public comment during the board meeting and also receiving written comment. Although we cannot promise that all the comments received after this public hearing will be summarized, staff will do their best efforts to ensure that your voice is heard by the State Board of Education. I would like to call on Megan Gailey. You're welcome. Megan Gailey has chosen not to provide public comment. At this time, I do not see any other names in the chat box. A reminder again to, I believe the name was Rob and Chrissy, that raised hands within the, and Kel raised a hand within the participants group. In order to provide public comment, you must enter your name and affiliated organization into the Zoom chat box. I would like to call, first off, a reminder, the chat box is to provide your name and, if applicable, affiliated organization, rather than being a back-and-forth dialogue. Written comments may be submitted to Rules Coordinator SBE at K12.wa.us. I would like to call on Stacy Kimball, and she's a parent.
Hi.
Please do.
Okay. My name is Stacy Kimball. I'm a parent. I didn't really get a heads up on this meeting. I heard about it five minutes before it started. But I am someone who withdrew from public schools, and I've been looking at private schools in the area, and one of our main concerns is masking. We don't want our children to have to wear masks while we're in school. I know there's a lot of parents that feel the same way. And public health and safety is sort of becoming a charged word among parents. So when we say what used to be innocuous terms like public health and safety, this will increase our safety and this gives us, you know, more ways to enforce such a thing. You know, it used to be a good thing to everybody, but now it kind of brings a feeling of dread upon some parents because, you know, we don't want a lot of these safety regulations. We want to be able to have options in private school that are masked. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Next, I would like to call on Gina Ricard, who is a teacher at a private school. Once unmuted, you may begin. Thank you. There is a large list of participants, so it may take a moment to unmute people once called upon.
Gina should be able to unmute herself.
Gina Ricard, please at this time unmute yourself if you wish to provide public comment. If we were unable to hear you clearly or you have technical issues, you may submit public comment in written form to Rules Coordinator SBE at K12.wa.us. Calling again on Gina Ricard, a teacher at a private school, you are able to unmute at this time and begin your public comment. Hearing no public comment from Gina Ricard, I will move on to the next participant. If you're having trouble speaking or connecting, you can attempt to provide public comment again or provide written comment to Rules Coordinator SBE at K12.wa.us. The next up is Josh McKenzie, no affiliation identified. Please provide your public comment once unmuted. Thank you.
Hi, yes, I'm a parent in the Kenwick School District. Our children as well go to a private school for individual reasons. It is concerning that the state has taken it upon themselves to further reach into the public or the private school system to, it seems to be maybe control that system a little more. And I know most parents in the area that choose private schooling have done so to be able to have the autonomy to have an education for their children of their choosing. To have the state further reach into that system really defeats that purpose. I can understand if it's for, you know, very, very serious reasons, but I don't see any need for that in the current setting. And so I would be firmly against any changes to rules that would create more oversight and roadblocks for the private school system.
Thank you for your public comment. I see a question in the chat box regarding a way to unmute yourself. Once you've opened Zoom and you're looking at the graphical user interface of Zoom, there will be a bar with a mute button to the far left that will look like a stand-on desk microphone. Please use that button to unmute. And next up is Lisa Smith, who has identified as a parent. Please provide your public comment once unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Okay, it'll be quick. I just want to say I'm 100% in agreement with what the other parents have said. My children have always gone to public school. I went to public school. I put them in private school this year because I wanted to have more control over the decisions of their health and well-being. And so I'm very concerned if the state is trying to get more involved here. You know, I really want to be able to make the best choice for my children. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Tara Johnson, who is identified as a parent. Once unmuted, please provide your public comment. Thank you. As a reminder to people raising their hands within the participant list, you must enter your name and, if applicable, affiliated organization into the chat box in order to be called upon for public comment. The raising hand function in Zoom will not allow public comment. Tara Johnson, if you're able and you're not experiencing technical issues, please provide your public comment at this time. Tara Johnson, if you're experiencing technical issues or you're unable to communicate through the mic, written public comment may be submitted to Rules Coordinator SBE at K12.wa.us. Hearing no public comment from Tara Johnson, identified as parent, going to the next participant, Carly Reed. Once unmuted, please provide your public comment. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, here you're fine.
Good afternoon. I am a soon-to-be-grandparent, and I have also been a former employee at a private high school. I'm very concerned about the rules in being overreached into the private schools. It is stepping onto the the opportunities the parents have a choice of sending their kids to a private school. The private schools we have around here observe the mask and the requirements, and they do that here. And my concern is that if you do this overreach of rules in the private school that assume overreaching to homeschooling families. And with that, with all that in mind, with from public school to private school to homeschool, if you implement these overreaching rules into the private schools, you're going to see more families leave the public schools into homeschooling. I need eight.
Thank you for your public comment. I apologize for the sound. I've turned off the sound on the timer. Next up is Andrew Thompson, who has identified with no affiliation. Before you speak, Andrew, I'd like to note that the chat box is not for providing public comment on these proposed rules. You may submit written public comment to Rules Coordinator SBE at K12.wa.us or enter your name and affiliated organization, if applicable, into the chat box. And also, if any participants are having trouble finding their mute button, it looks like a stand-up microphone within the graphical user interface of Zoom. Also on the Zoom website is a tutorial for using the software.
Parker, I think the issue is you won't see that unmute button until we've given you access to it. So until your name comes up, you may not see that button.
Andrew.
That's not true. I see my unmute button. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, good.
So Andrew Thompson, who has identified with no affiliation, please provide public comment at this time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a father of three boys, and my wife and I have chosen to send our kids to private school. I don't see a timer. Are you going to start the timer?
I apologize. I was reading the chat box. I'll restart it one minute.
Thank you. So as I understand it, the State Board has the ability to certify private institutions. So logically, they would have the power to take away that certification. And this is all about the rulemaking that is around that power to remove that certification or suspend a private institution from being able to educate children. And I'm just wondering, what is, what is the reason for bringing this up now? We're coming off of a two-year emergency pandemic where a lot of us disagree with the government's approach to the pandemic. We think that the masking of kids is detrimental to their education and their well-being. And so it sounds like this is part of that movement to take power away from the parents. And so I'm wondering, what's the emergency?
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Ying H., who identified as a parent. Once unmuted, please begin your public comment. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ying. And I have kids both in public school and a private school. By comparing their education, I totally, you know, believe that we, in current setting, we don't have any need to change this because obviously the private school doesn't have posed any healthy issue, health issue here. I don't understand the rule change is because I don't know the purpose. This is a look like you're tackle a small kitchen faucet issue by trying to re-pipe all the kitchen. When we talk about the health issue, we think about the mask and the vaccinate. And I send my kids to private school is for special needs. And this kind of general rule applied to special group kids is totally, I think, unreasonable. So I fully against this change.
Thank you for your public comment. Noting that I see Tara Johnson stating that she had pressed unmute. If you would like to provide public comment at this time, please do so. Once you're able to unmute, you may begin your public comment. Thank you.
Okay, I'm on a computer now. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear you clearly? I'll restart it.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry, I was on a cellphone before. Okay, I just want to echo a lot of what the parents have said. This language sounds very innocuous, and it's based on health and safety. I am a parent of three children in private school in Pierce County. Our school was fined by the Department of Labor and Industry because some teachers failed to wear masks properly. They were fined for violating WAC 296-800-1105, which reads, "You must provide your employees with a workplace free from recognized hazards that are causing or are likely to cause serious injury or death." The idea that some people not wearing masks is likely to cause serious injury or death is so far from innocuous. This is a great overreach of power. This is not why the Board of Education exists. This is doing damage to our children to pretend that health and safety is something that the Board of Education has the right to define. Many of us think our children need to be in regular environments where they can get sick, and a sterile environment is not the place for them to be.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Michelle Tyler, who's identified as a parent. Once you're unmuted, please begin your public comment. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you clearly.
Michelle Tyler, I'm a parent. I'm in complete agreement with the other parents and teachers who have spoken up. I have one child in private school and one that I'm homeschooling. I feel strongly that masks should be optional, left to the parent's discretion. Sorry, discretion. The children are not at risk from COVID. There has not been a single documented case of a teacher getting COVID from a student. Furthermore, the teachers have all had the option, as well as the mandate, to get vaccinated. So they are not at risk from the students. I think this is a complete overreach. Private schools are not funded by the state, so the Board of Education should not have any say in how they conduct business. This is a time where we're dealing with a variant that is very mild, and as viruses mutate, they become milder, and many states are lifting restrictions. This is the wrong time and inappropriate move, and I'm completely against it. Thank you. Hi. No.
Thank you for your public comment. I continue to hear a voice. Was your public comment complete?
It was. That was my son.
Oh, gotcha. I would like to check in on whether Rochelle Goodman would like to provide public comment. I see a note in the chat box. The chat box is for entering your name and affiliated organization so that you can provide public comment rather than submitting written comment. If you would like to submit written public comment, please do so by sending an email to Rules Coordinator SBE at K12.wa.us. Rochelle, if you're unmuted, would you like to provide public comment?
Yes, I can provide public comment.
Thank you.
I have a son in public school, and, excuse me, in private school, and we chose to do that because of the belief systems that we hold. And we, my husband and I, both disagree with any more state rules or regulations reaching into the private school system. We are against this, and we would likely move our children to homeschool. And if it bled into homeschool, we would likely leave the state. So we are very passionately against it.
Thank you for your public comment. One moment while I locate the next person. Tara Johnson has provided public comment. Correct other staffers who are watching? Okay. Next up is Tiffany Gillespie, who is a principal of a private school. Please provide a public comment once unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Tiffany Gillespie, and I'm the principal of a private school in Washington State. And I agree with all the parents and teachers that have shared. This feels like an overstep from the state. We have been following all the guidance already. And I do believe it would cause an additional cost, especially not knowing where our Department of Health is going if we have to provide testing for our students or any mandatory things like that that require an extra expense. That would be a burden and cost to our schools where we're already fully funded by tuition only and not by any help from the state. And if we had any federal funding to get those items that we would be required to use, then we would be compromising our belief system because we don't want to receive federal funding. That's why we're a private school. We like our freedoms for religion and for other reasons, and we like not being tied to any federal dollars. So I don't agree with this new proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Pete Serrano, who is identified with the Silent Majority Foundation and is a private uh, parent of private school children, who would like to express concerns with the rules. Once unmuted, please provide public comment at this time. As a reminder to participants, raising the hand function in Zoom will not result in you providing public comment. Please enter your name and if applicable, organization into the chat box. Calling, please do.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Can hear you clearly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my name's Pete Serrano. I'm a uh, parent of two children in Franklin County private schools. Uh, I'm also from Silent Majority Foundation, but I'm not here representing the foundation or anything right now. Um, I did provide this in writing because I didn't think I'd be able to attend this afternoon. But I'll simply address my concerns. I had a handful of concerns with the definitional issues, specifically, uh, I'll run through them quickly. WAC one eighty ninety one twelve, the way it defines uh, the private school and then the term in one eighty ninety one thirty dash one uh, addresses private organizations rather than private schools. So I'm a little bit concerned that that's an expansion of the prior intended definition of pub- private school. So I think that needs to be brought into consideration. Looking at WAC one eighty ninety one twelve two A, when it talks about other applicable health requirements. Um, and it talks about the term reasonable health requirements. It's employed in section uh, one eighty ninety dash one four one. Because I'm concerned with these specifically because there's really no definitional term there. Um, I had a handful of other concerns. Again, I raised those via email. Um, but precisely, you know, I think the one that really hits home is WAC one eighty ninety one four four dash two uh, sub two, excuse me. When it talks about the reasonable basis of violations and presenting an immediate danger to health, safety or welfare um, and other members of the school community. Again, seeking definitional commonality between those or some type of definitional definitional representation would be helpful just to understand what it's seeking to to regulate. Again, apologize for taking more than my two minutes. Uh, but thank you for your time.
Thank you for providing public comment. I would like to apologize to Rob uh, Leinbarger. Um, I apologize also if I pronounced your name wrong. Uh, I missed you earlier. And uh, Rob is affiliated with the C V S D Parents Coalition. I assume that's Central Valley School District Parents Coalition.
That's correct. Good afternoon and you did not butcher my name, so uh, thank you for that. One of many or one of the few that don't. Hey, uh, just a little about myself. I'm a director level data scientist with a Fortune fifty tech company that's, you know, probably the largest in the world. Um, one of my jobs that I do is I build data trend analysis models for um, like uh, petabyte level systems and uh, telemetry for like field uh, reliability and things like that. So I know data models. If you look at the papers last week and you saw what the test scores, they are a complete disaster. And I think this group, you might have an opportunity instead of trying to restrict, you know, the the rights of the people that put their kids in private school, why don't you take the opportunity to do a comparative analysis as to the kids that are in private school? How many days of school did they miss? What do their test scores look like? You know, was it, was it actually negative to have the um, the overreach of all the testing in the public schools because of all the missed school days? It resulted in, for example, Central Valley School District had a thirty nine percent decline in math test scores, right? And the the what's, what changed? The COVID mandates and all the restrictions. I think you should look at the private schools as the example, do an analysis and see, you know, where the problem really resides. It's not in the private schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. I've noticed a comment that the unmuted button isn't there. Um, if you bring up the graphical user interface for Zoom, you'll find an image of a uh, icon that looks like a stand on desk microphone uh, with the word mute on it. That's how you unmute. Uh, there's also a Zoom tutorial and you may connect by phone or by another device if you're having challenges. If you're having technical difficulties, you may submit written comment to rules coordinator S B E at K twelve dot W A dot U S. Next up is Julie Meyer, who has stated that um, affiliates as a parent. Please provide public comment once unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Can hear you clearly.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, I am a parent of a student who moved to private school from public in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Um, the virtual, my daughter would not get out of bed. And so our private school was open year round. And they didn't have the strict max masking policy like they do this year um, due to them taking federal funds to get Chromebooks. Um, I think that implementing um, more state direction or interference would definitely tie the hands. And if that's the case, like others, we will either finish out high school with homeschool or move to a different state to um, finish there. So just wanted to put that out there that the reason there's a mass exodus and going to private is to have more freedom and flexibility to have control with our children. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your public comment. Calling on Megan Gailey, uh, who identifies as a parent. Once unmuted, please provide your public comment.
Hi, this is Megan. Can you hear me?
Can hear you clearly. Thank you.
So we have seen a lot of kids leaving public schools. By taking away accreditation from private schools, what do you hope to accomplish? Um, there is a reason why private schools were created to give parents a choice. These parents will not, by you doing this, choose to put their kids in public schools. If anything, it will cause a greater divide, which is, I don't think what your intention is hopefully. Um, instead of applying more restrictions for private schools, why not change public schools so that parents actually want to keep their kids in public schools?
Thank you for your public comment. Carly Reed would like to uh, provide another quick comment. It's not typical to provide a second opportunity for public comment, but um, uh, we'll allow it in this case. Uh, we may not be able to make that provision. Um, i- if if that occurs with with other people uh, based on time. Uh, so Carly Reed, would you like to provide your public comment?
Yes, thank you so much for this second opportunity. I know it's rare and I greatly appreciate it. Now, the other comment I want to make real quickly is that I have also been on the Washington State Board of Health tag Zoom meetings from the very beginning. The last tag meeting will be this Thursday and at nine o'clock. And so what I'm getting from all this is that this is going literally tamper and restrict the the rights of the students, the families, the making the choice. Now, but if the vaccine that mandate rolls out by the State Board of Health, I sure hope that the sport State Board of Health uh, of Education and all schools will rise up because you're going to face a mass exodus of students leaving the school districts to find other opportunities of education. And in the meantime, it's going to hurt your pocketbook.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Arena Capitula. I apologize if I may mispronounce your name. And Arena identifies as a parent. Please provide public comment once unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, yes, my name is Arena Capitula and I just wanted to echo everything that all of the parents were saying. I absolutely disagree with the state overreaching into the private school sector. Private school does not receive federal funding. And I, as a parent, do not get a break to have my kids in private school, although my taxes pay for public school system. So the fact that the state is trying to step in and try and apply the rules is is concerning to me as a parent. And unfortunately, there is a reason why parents are choosing to put their kids into a private school by the hundreds, and that should be eye opening for the public school system.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Joanna Phelan, uh, who identifies as a parent. And I apologize if I've mispronounced your name. Please provide public comment once unmuted. Thank you.
Hello, this is Joanna. Can you hear me?
Can hear you fine.
Great. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Uh, my name is Joanna Phelan. I um, have been a resident of Washington for the majority of my life. I attended private school K through college and now have my children enrolled in a private school. Um, I think it's very clear based on the consensus of parents here that have spoken that we do not want government overreach in this area. And um, private schools are privately funded and want private control of the decisions that are made. And um, that's what we would like to continue. Um, please keep in mind that are we are voting with our dollars. We are paying property taxes for education for private or for public education on top of tuition during a time of inflation. And therefore, we are feeling the pinch of uh, private school parents even more than normal. And therefore, we really stand for what we believe in, that we want to keep the government out of our schools. We hope that you take into a consideration that there is a small majority of us that would like to keep the government out of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Noted in the chat is that Trevor Gailey has provided emailed public comments to the State Board of Education. Board members will receive that co- written comment. Next up is Stacy H, who identifies as a parent. Uh, please provide public comment uh, once you're unmuted and ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Stacy. Can you hear me?
Can hear you clearly.
Okay, I would like to echo the rest of the parents. Um, I I was holding on to a comment that the last person who spoke just brought attention to in the fact that parents who uh, fund private education for their children are being double are are double whammying for the cost of education because we are still paying it out of our taxes. The reason that we choose to send our children to private school is because we're able to shop around and find a private school who has the same morals, values and um, belief systems as our families do. It is a complete government overreach for you to involve yourself other than very minimal ways to make sure that children are physically safe from harm such as devastated buildings, unsafe playground equipment, et cetera. Other than that, it's private for a reason. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Roman, who identifies as a parent. Please pr- provide public comment when we're uh, ready and unmuted. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. Uh, my name is Roman and I'm a, I'm a father of uh, three kids and um, my oldest one, we we put him in a private school because of this whole um, these roles and regulations of public schools that I think is just wrong, you know? I mean, they call it public schools, but frankly, the public has no say, the kind of curriculum they put in place for for so-called public schools. So and now they're trying to enforce private, the private se- sectors to uh, run the government to run the curriculum for for private schools. That's, that's just, that's crazy. You know, that's, that's, that's insane. I'm, I'm totally disagreed on that. So that's, that's my stance on it and my wife's stance. Yeah, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you prefer for providing public comment, Roman. Next up is Bobby Winery, who is a principal of a private school. Please provide public comment once unmuted. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Oh, good. Okay, uh, thanks. I just wanted to say, uh, because I don't know, I I understand that you guys probably know, but we already do as private schools uh, fill out um, safety and health regulations. And I'm just not really sure why all of a sudden there needs to be something different happening. Um, when like, is there a big problem with safety and health in private schools? Is, has that been a major concern? Um, I'm going to say probably not. Um, and also because of this, um, it really is going to cost private schools. We're a smaller private school. It's going to cost us money for whatever, whatever is decided, a new thing that we have to do. I've already spent days that I should be doing other things like um, listening to my teachers, you know, doing um, um, interviews with teachers and different things like this. And I have to spend time, you know, trying to figure out what you guys are going to tell me that I have to do. So that's my comment. I'm totally against it and I think it's fine how it is. We've been doing private school this way. I've been the principal for a long time. Everybody's been fine.
Thank you for your public comment. Stacy Kimball has requested um, the opportunity to provide one more comment. Um, I'm going to allow it again. But I think that this should be the last time because everyone else is getting uh, just one minute of public comment. So uh, Stacy, uh, if you would like to provide public comment at this time and to others who uh, may wish provide a second comment, written public comment may be submitted to rules coordinator S B E at K twelve dot W A dot U S. Stacy, when you're unmuted, uh, please provide public comment.
Hey, thanks so much for giving me the opportunity to speak again. There was just one more thing I wanted to say about um, the language in the regulation. And I'm no legal expert or anything, but uh, you referenced due process two or three times that this increases our due process. Um, but the definition of due process is through a normal judicial system on through the state court. And um, I don't think that a meeting with the board um, increases due process. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you for the public comment. I'm just ensuring that I get people in the correct order.
I think, I think it's Ben next.
Thank you. Next up is Ben Nissan, who identifies as a parent. Please provide public comment when you're ready.
Hello, thank you for providing the opportunity for me to present my comments. Um, as a parent who is newly acquainted with Washington Public Schools, I left here from Calif- I left to here from California. Um, I am concerned at the regulations as presented. They are vague at best and and at worst, and I do not necessarily impugn motive. But these seem intentionally obscured. The terms health and safety can certainly be redefined. And that offers great concern to me. As a parent of two children, both who had to endure uh, a year of Zoom, I watched my students love for, my son's love for education plummet. They went from B and C students to F students and they have struggled since to try and uh, to try and attach um, to try and attach additional rules and regulations to private institutions who are seeking to have a healthy learning environment for our children is concerning. I do thank you for your desire for, to see that our children are well taken care of. However, I do believe that local county mandates and local counties can address these situations without creating a whole superstructure for our private schools to endure. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Zan. Next up is Zandra Zupan, who identifies as a parent and behaviorist. Please provide public comment once you're ready. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I believe parents need the ability to make the best choices for our children. And blurring the lines between private and public removes that choice. We've known as a behavior specialist, we've known for decades that children's emotional well-being depends in part on neurological development, which comes from watching faces and recognizing emotions. With masking, we're disadvantaging children from developing the necessary skills to discern those emotions and the neurological changes that are needed for a healthy childhood development. And from a health perspective, we know that while wearing a mask, the carbon dioxide exhaled is largely trapped and accumulates, which produces a variety of effects, including dizziness, difficulty breathing. We have kids passing out now at recess and going into convulsions, not to mention the increase in suicides the past two years. So by definition and endless studies masking our children falls under the definition of psychological warfare and child abuse. This is my professional opinion and experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your public comment. Currently, there are no more names listed within the chat box. As a reminder to participants, please enter your name and if applicable, affiliated organization into the chat box if you wish to provide public comment. And as a reminder, if you use the raise hand function within Zoom, that will not result in you being called upon for public comment. You must enter your name and affiliated organization into the chat box. If you wish to provide written public comment, you may do so by emailing Rules Coordinator SBE@k12.wa.us. Next up is Steve Simmons, who identifies as a parent. When you're ready, please provide public comment. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I was looking through the proposed changes and I'd like to echo some of the thoughts that I've heard from a couple of parents here that private schools, we don't need to blur the lines between private and public schools. And also, once again, that this, a lot of these rules are creating ambiguous language. It's very broad and undefined. And I don't think that needs to be in these rules or do these rules need to be changed or added to. And I see that private schools offer a different choice for parents. I'm a very strong proponent of choice. And that we don't need to have burdensome and overregulation and blurring those lines between the public and private schools. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. In the Zoom chat box, oh. Yeah, in the Zoom chat box, I've noticed a request from Scott Vandenberg for a summary. Sorry, Steve, where he's. So a request for a brief summary of what the proposed rules do. So I provided a comprehensive summary earlier. I'm going to provide a much shorter version. Essentially, under current rule, the State Board of Education can rescind private school approval as in take an action so that a private school loses approval. And that's based on a staff recommendation or identification of an issue to the board or based on the board taking an action and voting. What these rules do is they set in place a brief adjudicative hearing so that the private school is able to state its case that there's a predictable method of resolving concerns about compliance with state requirements. And statute defines the role of the State Board of Education as ensuring health and safety of students at private schools through this approval process. And so the rules set up a a clearly defined process for resolving potential loss of approval compared to current rules. And next up is Ashley Daniels, who identifies as a parent. Please provide public comment when ready. Ashley Daniels, I can see that your Zoom box looks as if you're speaking or attempting to speak. We're not hearing sound on our end. I can hear your voice very barely. Are you able to raise volume or get closer proximity to the microphone? I can barely hear you and I have a real good hearing. So I'm currently not hearing any volume from any noise from your microphone net.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now I can. Oh, there is an echo from my voice, though. I'll let you know if.
Hold on. All right. Okay. You got me now?
Yeah, I can hear you clearly now.
Okay. I hooked up my Bluetooth. And so I am a parent and I'm actually an ex-public school teacher. I, when my first son was born, I became a stay-at-home mom. And so now we are a blue collar family and my kids are in private school, which I need to leave right now to go pick them up. And but this is very important to me. And I have made the decision with my husband based on our beliefs that private school is where kids need to be. There are amazing teachers in public school. And they deserve to have the kids that are in private school in public school. But parents are pulling their kids out because of things that are going on in public schools. And I really think looking at what's in the private schools is in comparing it to what's in public schools is really what needs to be taken a look at. And I would love to be back teaching, but I'm not going to go back to public schools. I think there's a lot of overreach. And even my friends still teaching believe that there's an overreach of the state.
As a reminder, you've reached your time. Please conclude your comment.
And but I just believe that a lot of parents are oh, there's an overreach and this is a continuing of an overreach. And that's why parents are leaving is this overreach that they're seeing in the public schools.
Thank you for your public comment.
Okay, thank you.
I see board member Jan Marie Brown, the private schools representative on the board, asking the question if she may be invited once again to join you. Jan, is that a request to provide public comment at this time?
It is not, but I am listening intently. Thank you, Parker.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next up is Nina, a parent, who would like to provide public comment. Please do so once unmuted. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you clearly.
Okay, just a second. Let me see. I'm a, I'm a parent. My, I pulled my kids from public school to private school because of the my, the public school teaches immoral values and also very radical, like such as radical theories, such as the CRT, critical racial theory, and and also mixed up gender sex educations. So I really think the state government is encroaching into the private sector. And also caused us to, besides, we are double paying one, one part for our kids' education and the other part, we're also paying taxes to fund the public school. But now we're, you want to put more regulations on the private sector, private schools, which is not not a good, good thing, not the right.
Reminder that you've reached the end of the time of your public comment. Please conclude your remarks.
Yeah, I strongly oppose this bill and I hope that the state government will will not put more restrictions on the private schools.
Thank you for your public comment. I am not seeing any more names entered for requests to provide public comment. As a reminder, written comment may be submitted to Rules Coordinator SBE@k12.wa.us. And also as another reminder, raising the hand within the participants box does not result in you providing public comment. You must enter your name and if applicable, affiliated organization into the Zoom chat box. Seeing more names. I would like to call on Danielle. Please provide public comment once unmuted. If you have attempted to speak, we were unable to hear you clearly. If you experience technical difficulties or connection problems, then you are welcome to submit written comment to Rules Coordinator SBE@k12.wa.us. Danielle, would you like to attempt to provide public comment?
You're very, very faint.
Yeah, I heard a little bit of sound, but nothing, nothing understandable.
Is this better? Can you hear me now?
Yes, it's still quiet, though. If you're able to bring the phone or the microphone into closer proximity and aim it directly at your mouth or raise the volume on your computer.
I'm so close. I know it.
We can hear you and understand you. Some participants may have more trouble with that, but please provide your public comment.
Okay, I am a parent and I recently, I actually switched my child to private school this last year. I, like the last participant said, it's a complete overreach. I can speak for most parents that have switched over to the private side. We've done this because we don't like the way that public schools are being ran. And it's extremely unfair that we are paying property taxes. We're paying the taxes and then we're also paying private school. And we're doing that so our kids can have a better education and a different education. So the overreach that is happening, honestly, it will just cause me, I will pull my kids from even private school if this happens, like it for them to go forward and to continue to have this overreach is preposterous. So that's just my public comment. I really hope that this does not go into effect.
Thank you for providing public comment. Next up is Bill Gillette, who is a private Christian school principal, who would like to provide public comment. Please do so at this time once unmuted. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been in education for 32 years, 20 in public, 12 in private sector. And the thing that bothers me is we talk about health and safety, but you're not comparing data. If you look at my class, my classes in my school, we have hardly any cases of COVID, even though we haven't been masking. And it seems like all the public sector wants to do is punish the private sector. There's no benefit at all to the private schools to being involved in the public. It's why we don't take the public money. Only thing we get is threatening of loss of our school approval, problems or fines from LNI and from the State Department of Education. I'd really love you to look at our data from our numbers of students and COVID cases and the protocols that we followed. We're doing much better than the public sector here. And we have very, very few cases. I've got happy students with smiles on their faces, happy parents. We've got a happy campus, healthy campus. Students are learning. They're in the classroom. They want to be here. Big difference between what's going on down the street at the public schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. As a reminder to participants, please do not use the Zoom chat box to provide a written public comment. Written public comment may be sent to Rules Coordinator SBE@k12.wa.us. If you would like to provide oral public comment, please enter your name and if applicable, affiliated organization into the Zoom chat box. And as for the question regarding whether there's a list of board members who propose changes, there is not. At the time of voting on the final document, board members can provide amendments or amend the motion. And that's kept in the minutes of board meetings, but these proposed changes are not there's no list of which board members created them. So and this is usually not a back and forth. I just wanted to provide that information because somebody asked. Next up is Barb. Please provide public comment once you're unmuted. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you clearly.
Yeah, as a blue collar family here, the main purpose of sending my kids to private school, at least in my opinion, is we don't like some of the rules or or education policy curriculum in the public, public school. And now you want to step into private school and use your ruling power to silence parents' choice and parents' voice again. As a minority group, I would say I don't like CRT. And if you people have some common sense, you will know what you're doing is not for our kids' health and our future, our kids' future. Please stop this policy. Stop this ruling. You have to listen to all the parents. Otherwise, we are getting our kids out of private school as well. We will unite together and then we will homeschool our kids. Thank you.
Thank you for providing public comment. Ying H., who identifies as a parent is up. However, Ying, did you provide public comment earlier in the meeting? If this is the same Ying H., it's my understanding that you provided public comment earlier. We've allowed two exceptions to that, but no further exceptions to that. If you would like to provide longer public comment, you may do so in written form by sending it to Rules Coordinator SBE@k12.wa.us. If you are a different Ying H., please indicate so in the chat box. Next up is Jean, oh. James Glaude has not indicated that you would like to provide public comment. Written public comment may be submitted to Rules Coordinator SBE@k12.wa.us and cannot be submitted through the chat box. Next up is Janine Conway, who is a parent. Please provide public comment once unmuted. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, clearly.
Okay, awesome. Hi, I'm Janine. My kids, I have two small children. They're both in private school. A hundred percent single mom have been since conception. So I also am a business owner and I've had to really pinch pennies to be able to get them into their public school and the reason, or excuse me, private school. And the reason I've done that is because I don't agree with the way that public schools are being ran at this moment. And I just want to reiterate everything that everyone has said since I've gotten on Zoom. And I've yet to hear somebody who is in agreements with this. And so I really hope that you guys take into consideration that every single person you've heard from is against it. And if you are really going to represent our state and our kids' future and the parents, you'll take that into consideration because nobody at this point wants it. And it is an overreach and um, there's a reason that our kids are in public school or private school instead of public. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Danielle, it's my understanding that you've already provided public comment and we're simply uh. Noting that you were trying to speak. Uh, next uh. Is Andy Baber, who identifies as a parent. I apologize if I've mispronounced your name. Please provide public comment at this time once unmuted. Thank you.
Can you clarify? Are the set of rules that are under consideration WSR twenty two dash zero three dash zero nine eight?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I think that you're, the summary of the the rules changes that you that you made uh, just briefly a moment ago, don't capture the actual intended effect of the rules. They are institute instituting um, health and safety requirements, which would in in fact cover closing of the schools and masking at the schools. And I oppose these rules being incorporated. I stand with all of the other parents that have voiced their opposition. It would be a a vast overreach for the state to undertake such a change. Um, the SBE should not include these rules as they are currently written. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. And just to note, um, public comment doesn't occur as a back and forth, so I'm 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 not um. Able to respond to the due to protocol. So next up for public comment. Is. I do not see further names uh, of people who have signed up for public comment. If you wish to provide public comment, please enter your name and affiliated organization into the chat box. Uh, next up is Jared Olson. Once unmuted, please provide comment.
Yeah, hi, um, as a taxpayer, I can appreciate the panic that the SBE must be in right now. Um, you're losing public school students by the hundreds, if not thousands. Uh, I know that that impacts your bottom line. Uh, to a business owner, you know, this would serve as an opportunity to reflect, assess and improve. But in classic bureaucrat fashion, uh, your board is doubling down and trying to impose the same asinine mandates on private schools that the greater population is freeing, is fleeing within the public system you've created. Uh, the board's level of ego with this is astounding. Your approach demonstrates why not a single member is mentally fit for the position which you currently hold. The fact that you're appointed versus elected says it all. The fact that you're responsible for education of majority of Washington's future generations is horrifying, but it's also a great example of why we need to completely revamp our local, state and federal school boards. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Um, I'd like to respond to a question in the chat box. Um, the official deadline for written public comment is the time of the hearing. However, the board, as an informal practice, uh, makes its best efforts to uh, receive and um, the and staff provide public comments that in written form or in verbal form uh, at the board meeting to to board members before they vote. So the official deadline is the public hearing. Uh, but staff will do their best efforts to ensure that board members review written public comment all the way up until their vote. Uh, obviously, after they vote on the rules, there's uh. Uh, that's definitely the end of any opportunity to provide public comment. So um, next up is Erin M., who identifies as a parent. Please provide public comment uh, once you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, clearly.
Great, thanks so much. Okay, so I've been told constantly that if I don't like what the public schools are doing, I can just go ahead and pay for private school. Never mind that I'm paying an enormous amount of taxes already for the public school. So sure enough, new private schools opening down the road, I could not be more excited about it. I cannot wait to pull my schools from the public system, which has just been so detrimental to their health and well-being. And yet now, guess what? Masks can follow. Vaccine mandates can follow just based on this new bill that you are proposing. It is astounding to me that with a mass exodus, I mean, he's right, thousands and thousands of students are leaving the public school system and there is a reason for it. You don't seem to care what the reason is. You seem to double down. You want your reach and your control to go to every single nook and cranny of the entire state. And you should be learning that this is not what parents want. We want choice. We want to be able to decide what is best for our children. And I am telling you, with the number of suicides that are happening with our young people, their social health being terrible, their testing scores being atrocious, this isn't happening in private school. So instead, we should be reaching out to all the private school principals and teachers and figure out what they're doing and try to put it in there as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. At this time, I don't see any further names uh, entered into the Zoom chat box, um, requesting to provide public comment. Uh, if you're uh, in the Zoom call and you wish to provide public comment, please do so by entering your name and if applicable affiliated organization into the chat box. Just a reminder, the raised hand function in Zoom will not result in us calling on you for a public comment. Written public comment may be submitted to rules coordinator SBE at K twelve dot WA dot US. And so if no more number or no more names appear in the chat box, um, once that occurs, we'll take a, you know, few minutes, wait to see if anything else occurs and then then close the public hearing. So, um. Erin, uh, who identifies as a parent would like to provide public comment at this time, may do so once unmuted. And as a reminder, written public comment cannot be submitted in the chat box. Please send written public comment to rules coordinator SBE at K twelve dot WA dot US. Thank you.
Hey, everyone, this is a parent. My name's Aaron. I have my kids escaping from the public schools because I want those you guys' dirty hands away from my ha- my 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 kids. Like, we have no way to escape. Next step is if you have a dirty hands away for catching my kids at so as my at the private school and we can, we have no way to escape. Please leave our kids alone. Keep, keep your dirty curriculums away from our kids. There are many, many kids in the private schools are for that purpose. You know what you have done to damage for this country's future. You know you have done the damage for the kids' futures. Please keep your dirty hands away. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Abby Oust. I apologize if I mispronounced your name, uh, who identifies as a parent. Once unmuted, please provide public comment. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, clearly. Uh, there's an echo though.
I just wanted to say thank you for giving us the the opportunity to um, share our opinions on this forum. And first and foremost, I just want to reiterate everything that everyone has said. Um, from a parent perspective, I have three children in a private school setting. The private school sector gives us the opportunity to um, have our morals and our values passed on to our children, which is the most important thing to us. It is a Christ-centered education. That's the most important thing, even though we are paying taxes for the public school and tuition for children, which is very expensive, which other people have mentioned. Um, this is an overreach to create more rules. Our private schools are doing an excellent job keeping our children safe. They're following the current rules that are more than sufficient. And our kids are happy and thriving. They're not sick and there is no reason for um, the government to have any more overreach in a perfectly fine system where we are happy, thriving and well.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Nino Capatula. And I apologize if I mispronounced the name. Please provide public comment when ready and unmuted. Thank you. You know, there is no volume coming from you if you are trying to speak. You know, again, uh, there's, yeah, we're not hearing anything from you. Uh, please make sure you've clicked the unmute button. It looks like.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Good.
Okay.
Please.
So, yeah, I, yeah, I, uh, like I said, I want to first and foremost say that I agree with everything that has been said up to this point. And I do feel like that it is a um, insane overreach of um, state government and federal government. We are paying a high price for our children to be getting education based on the values that we that we have and um, and that we believe and for government to come and tell parents uh, how, what is the right, safe thing to do is absolutely ridiculous. Um, we have parental rights first and foremost. Uh, and um, that just has to stop. But they, our government needs to give us room to raise our children and to determine what is safe and what is not safe because uh, we can all agree that um. They are not the smartest people in the room. I'm sorry, but that's just the case that has been proven. That's it.
Thank you for your public comment. And as a reminder, the Zoom chat box is to identify yourself uh, for providing oral public comment. Written public comment should be sent to rules coordinator SBE at K twelve dot WA dot US and should not be entered into the Zoom chat box and will not be recorded there. Um. Next up is Dan Baber, who is a parent.
Yes, hello. Um, yeah, I just, I just want to, um. Oh, yeah, there we go. Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, I just wanted to just echo um, what I, what I hear other people saying, you know. Um, I want to just express appreciation for you serving our state and serving um, the children. I I do recognize that for many people in the state whose families aren't providing the kind of care that they need at home. They have the public school system to find that kind of care and protection. However, um, uh, parents are going to have the 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 most um, accurate and considerate um. Uh, source of information for the best way to serve their own children and public school and private institutions. If if parents are sending their kids to a private institution, uh, there needs to be a recognition of that authority that they have to entrust their children to the authority of those private institutions without the state interjecting further health requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Zavina Jones. Uh, please provide public comment. Um, once your mom's unmuted. Uh, thank you.
I'm at a public school and I like it here.
You're at a private.
Private school.
Want to tell them why you like it better?
I don't have to wear. And then. I like to stay here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for providing uh, public comment and uh, at such a young age, uh, participating in uh, in a public hearing. Uh, you should be proud of yourself. Uh, thank you for the comment. Uh, next up is Sarah Garia, uh, who is a parent. Apologies if I've mispronounced. Please provide public comment.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, clearly.
Thank you. I am a parent of three children. One recently graduated, one is in currently in private school, and I'm homeschooling my fifth grader. Uh, full-time, I pulled my children. As you all know, this last two years has been extremely traumatic for everyone in this state. And I appreciate your time and service on the board. Um, I'm watching the legislature right now trying to stabilize funding uh, because of the mass exodus from the public school system and their auspice is that it, that exodus was because of a COVID blip. I guarantee you from, I work with many, many parents across this state and it is not a COVID blip. Parents, children have left the public schools because academics have suffered greatly because of equity, diversity and inclusion, because of social emotional learning indoctrination, because of egregious sex ed um, curriculum. And we do not need any more regulation in private school. I anticipate more children leaving and I feel like this is an effort to stop that from happening. Thank you.
Thank you for providing public comment. Responding to a a technical question in the Zoom chat box. Final numbers are usually higher earlier in the hearing. I saw peak one sixty five. It's going to be a smaller group by the end of the hearing. It's at one twenty nine now. Next up is, um. Dr. Brett Bell, who identifies as a parent. Uh, please provide public comment. Dr. Bell, if you're attempting to speak, we're not hearing any uh, any volume. Dr. Bell, um, there's an unmute button.
All right, I I got it. All right, thank you. Uh, thank you for your time. I was just calling in. I've been in education for fifteen years. I taught for five years and I am a parent. Uh, I had uh, my kids in private school and then I was in public school. Uh, and now they're in private, they were in public school and now in private school. And I've actually been working at a tutoring center the last three years and so I've been dealing with uh, what has happened with the private or with the public school system. Uh, we've seen the numbers. Uh, I I think pretty clearly this is about money and we've seen what's happened with all of this with with everything that's happened with kids leaving the schools. But here's the big thing. Uh, the educational quality is getting lost in all this. We had kids on Zoom uh, virtual lessons at a, at a forty to one ratio, second graders. That's ridiculous. There's nothing in peer-reviewed educational journals that would go ahead and suggest that that is quality education. You had, uh, we've put all this time and effort into this common curri- core curriculum. Uh, there was nowhere close to getting through the Common Core skills over the last two years. And instead of private school or public schools going ahead and saying, hey, let's go ahead and try to see what we're doing wrong and improve. You guys are going ahead and trying to go ahead and see, well, let's go ahead and let's go ahead and bring down the educational quality of the public school system to bring it down or the pri- private school system to bring it down to the public school system. So why don't we go ahead and we'll all work together, get the public school system where it needs to be and not bring down the private school system because that's not the answer here. Uh, I really hope that you guys reconsider this. Uh, this really is not the right solution. You guys should not be involved in the in the, in the private school system like this is. Very concerned with this. I really want to be a part of the solution. I think everybody does, but uh, we're all very concerned about this.
Thank you for your public comment. Up next is Sarah Nail. Please provide comment when you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can hear you clearly.
That was easier than I thought it would be. Um, hi, I am a parent and uh, I have three kids and we've dealt with homeschool, public school and private school, all three. And I just wanted to quickly um, read something that Ronald Reagan, President Ronald Reagan said in his inaugural address. He said, in this present crisis, government is not the solution to our problems. Government is the problem. And I cannot reiterate that more in Washington State. I've lived here for forty four years and um, as a conservative in Washington State, it is horrendous. I can't even, it's, it, I can't even, I'm, I'm to- so emotional to even talk about it because it's um, the overreach that you have, uh, that this state has put into private school is disgusting. I can't, um. I can't say that enough. I just want you to know that I want to uh, put my opinion in the hat with everybody else and um, agree that the state has no right to come in. Put my opinion in the hat with everybody else and agree that the state has no right to come into. The private school and that we're paying tuition and we're paying tax dollars as well. And so please do not pass this.
Thank you for your public comment. Please don't enter written comment into the Zoom chat box. You can send it to the email address provided in the Zoom chat box. We're not accepting written comment through that form. Next up is Greg M., who is a parent. Please provide public comment. Once you're ready. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, clearly.
Yeah, hi, my name is Greg and I'm a parent of three, three boys, which is my oldest one. He's in a private school and. I I think it's it's just it's ridiculous what you guys are doing to the public set. Public schools, I mean, with the CRT and the sex ed, you guys have no right. You can't. I mean, this is something that should be done in the privacy of a parent's home. And now you guys are putting this on on the on the private, private schools that we're we're paying, you know. Top dollar and and it's it's against morality. It's against, I mean, we're trying to raise our our kids in a. In a godly morality manner. So you guys need to stick to what they need to learn mathematics, science, social studies. That's it. No sex ed, no CRT, okay, and no vaccination. So, yeah, this is infuriating. I just. Every time I think about it, it's I I'm livid, so. But I appreciate you guys' time and I thank you for letting us speak and giving, letting us. Say our piece about this.
Thank you. Thank you for participating and providing public comment. Next up is. Dave Baumann, who is a parent. Please provide public comment when ready.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah, clearly.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to say that, you know, I have three girls that we left public school and have sent to private school this year. And the reasons we did is the overreach of our parental. You know, guidance of our own children, the CRT, the sex ed bill, which I think should be. What the parents need to be, you know, teaching their kids and deciding when it's okay when they know about that kind of stuff. And the whole vaccine mandate thing and okay, they might be. Ma- mandating that for, you know, public school and then you guys, you're way overstepping your boundaries on. Trying to interfere with the private school. Like the gentleman before me said, we're paying top dollar to make sure that our kids are raised with values. And that our values are instilled in our children and. We will not go down without a fight. Honestly, this is, you are way overstepping your boundaries. I appreciate the chance to, you know, speak my piece, but. It's not over. Thank you.
Thank you for participating and providing public comment. I do not see any further names entered into the public or into the Zoom chat box. If you'd like to provide public comment, please enter your name and if applicable, any affiliated organization and we'll call on you. And as a reminder to participants, using the raise hand function in Zoom will not result in you being called upon. To provide a public comment and written public comment may be submitted to rules coordinator SBE. At K twelve dot W A dot U S. And so what we'll do is I'll do routine calls for additional people and then. Once that doesn't occur for a few minutes, we'll we'll close the the public hearing. So next up is Roger Gerstenberger. Who is a private school administrator. Please provide public comment when you're ready.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, clearly.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so my name is Roger. I'm a public school, or excuse me, private school administrator here. On the east side of the state and I've lived through this for the last two years. My challenge with this process, for example, is. I got a letter earlier this spring from Nicole Mulhouse and with State Board of Education saying that we were out of compliance. I'm not sure why she's not on this call since she's a private school rep. I would think it'd be good for her to hear. This this input, but anyways, any accusation against me, I am kind of guilty until proven innocent. Nor do I have the right to actually face my accuser in this process. And so. The bigger question here too is who is the arbiter of what defines health and wellness? And so as a private school, if anybody who can register a complaint anonymously. Against a private school saying that we are unsafe or because somebody felt emotionally harmed or. Unsafe, now we're going to have to go through this due process. We're going to have to spend more time and resources to defend ourselves, but yet. We we can't face our accuser and again, we we don't have an opportunity to define what. Health and wellness looks like. And so I think again, just as as the board, I would, I would implore you to please consider the implications. Of this process and the effect that it possibly could have since it is so broad and wide open. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment and public comment isn't normally a back and forth, but I would like to make a factual note. That Nicole Mulhouse and our private schools manager is listening on the phone call, but as practice. Staff and board members don't speak back and forth to the the attendees of the meeting and I'm the public hearing officer. My name's Parker Teed and I'm the primary person speaking. So let me check the chat box in case anyone. Has entered their name. I do not see any people interested in participating in public comment. If you would like to provide public comment, please enter your your name and if applicable, affiliated organization. Into the chat box and you'll be called upon. And you may submit written comment to rules coordinator SBE at K twelve dot W A dot U S. As for the question from Janine Conway. I I'm gonna defer to our communications manager Stephanie Davidson Meyer to to provide a text response if she's willing to do so. Next up is Debbie Garrity, private school employee. Please provide public comment when you're ready. Debbie, if you're attempting to speak, we cannot hear you.
Okay, hi Parker. I always like to, I was just wondering, I'd like to know what rules you were talking about that we aren't already following. Private schools have been following your rules and regulations and have been working like a well oiled machine this whole time. We were on top of the learning. When the China virus hit. But we didn't skip a step with our students going online and they stayed current and up to date and all their learning. This saying is true. If it's not broke, don't try and fix it. If you followed the science and not make this political, you would not pass any more rules for us to follow. We have a lot of work to do and we've been doing a really good job at it. And I would just ask that you would not put any more burden on private schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. And this is not usually a back and forth. If you would like to provide public comment, please enter your name and if applicable, affiliated organization into the Zoom chat box. And then I'll call on you. If you want to submit written public comment, please do so at rules coordinator SBE at K twelve dot W A dot U S. So what we'll do at this point is, you know, take a few pauses. I'll call for any names again. We'll do that, let's say, three times. And then, once that's complete, we'll close the public hearing. And you're welcome to submit written comment to the email address that Randy just provided in the chat box. And thank you all so much for participating.
Parker, do you wanna maybe summarize what next steps are, how this process goes forward from here?
Yeah, sure thing. So. There are current rules in place that allow for loss of private school approval based on board action. And and staff recommendation. These rule, these proposed rules would add a brief adjudicative hearing. Process to that so that private schools can state their side of the issue and have a chance to be heard. Those rules will be considered and there are other changes as described in the rule filing. At the next board meeting, the approval of these rules will be considered. And revisions can be considered by board members at that time to that final version and based on feedback. But then what happens is we file the rule with the code revisers office of the legislature. Then it takes thirty one days from the point when we file for the rules to go into effect. As permanent rule and that would establish essentially due process for. Loss of private school approval and add structure to that process. And at at this point, this is the end of formal gathering as required by the rulemaking process. Of public comment. And. You know, from here, the board informally makes its best efforts to receive further public comment. All the way through to the time when they vote and members of the public are welcome to contact us anytime as well. But after this public hearing, you know, staff cannot ensure that word members receive all public comment or that it's all summarized. You know, due to logistical constraints around having a board meeting, but we do a very good job of making sure that your. Public comment reaches the board members before they're voting and there is public comment at the board meeting. Although it's typically limited in in duration, this public hearing was intended as the primary venue. For providing feedback on these rules. And, you know, echoing a board member response in the chat box. Thank you all very much for participating. And, you know, public hearings are are very important and it's. It's it's good when there's civic discourse and feedback on a on a set of rules. So thank you all very much for participating and.
I want to add one thing, Parker, just that so the there will be a memo summarizing. The rules and the comments that will be published next week when we publish our board materials and then. Meeting itself is the following week. Well, and I should echo my thanks too for everyone participating. I appreciate that.
If anyone would like to provide public comment, please enter your name and if applicable affiliation into the chat box. And we'll call on you. Written comment may be submitted to rules coordinator at S B. Sorry, rules coordinator S B E at K twelve dot W A dot U S. And so this is the second call for. Any remaining public comment, written comment entered into the Zoom chat box will not be considered. You have to send it through to that email address that's been posted in the Zoom chat box. So we'll give it another minute and. Do a final call and then close the public hearing at that time. I see that Matt Kay, who is an educator, has entered in to provide public comment. Please do so once you're unmuted.
Hello, I appreciate you offering us the opportunity to come and share our point of view. I have agreed with everything that everyone has said. So I don't want to be redundant. I do want to ask the board to consider. Being a business, if you will, as we watch public education attendance hemorrhage. Students and watching private schools swell. I would be under the consideration that you would look at private schools doing something right as a model. And get information from us as opposed to. Going out of the route telling us how we should go about doing our education. So that is just a way that I would look at business on a business model. If I was losing customers and wondering why another business is doing well and succeeding. I would want to go and find out what they're doing right and adjust the way that I would do business. And so that's just something I would. Ask the board to take into consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for providing public comment. I'm gonna take a look at the Zoom chat box. At the moment, I don't see any other names listed to provide public comment. If you'd like to provide public comment, please enter your name and affiliated organization into the chat box. Written public comment may be sent to rules coordinator S B E at K twelve dot W A dot U S. So I'm gonna consider that the third call. Randy, do you have any concern with letting it last to three fifty?
I think we keep it open. It looks like we just had someone else.
Okay, yeah. Oh, more participants. Wonderful. Nicole H., who is an administrator and educator. Please provide public comment when you're ready.
Hi, thank you for your time. This is my first year actually teaching and administering over in the private sector. And before that, I spent fourteen years in the public school system. The last two again with COVID, which is some what some educators and parents were talking about and what I wanted to share were some numbers. Out of the hundred and thirty students that I had through the public school system, roughly twenty two percent of them were failing. That's about twenty nine kids. Of those failing grades, eight percent of my students were failing with a ten percent or less. And all of that was through the public school system, making mandates and requirements. That tied the public school systems hands into how we were supposed to provide our education to our students. I did not get to see any of my kids in the public school system from August. I'm sorry, excuse me, from March twenty twenty until February of twenty twenty one. And that was about a quarter of my students. So the the level of education that happened in the public school system. The level of. Student relationships that were student teacher, however you want to say it, relationships that were built were not. And the freedom that I have been able to have to be able to. Administer as well as educate in the private school sector has just been phenomenal. Students are able to learn and I'm visibly able to see them. Learn and connect the pieces. The relationships are there and it's. All strictly because of the freedom that we have in the private school sector. It's not through.
Nicole, as a reminder, you're you're about thirty, forty five seconds past your time. Please conclude your comments.
I apologize. It's not, it's not through the public school system and what they deem as best for education. It's what we feel as educators is best. That is it.
Thank you for your public comment. Next up is Bernadette McCune. I apologize if I've mispronounced it, who identifies as a parent and teacher. Please provide public comment once you're unmuted.
So it's it's Bernadette McCowen.
So it's, it's Bernard McCowen. Uh.
Now.
I feel as a parent, as a, as a teacher, I see happy students that are um excited to learn. And they're having normal socialization and relationships with their teachers and with their friends. And I don't see anything wrong with anything going on um in the private school and I feel that uh freedom of choice is important. And that there's nothing wrong with the regulations as they stand and um that we should be. Allowed to, to provide schooling as, as we see fit and um just what I see as a parent, as a teacher is. What, what I saw as a child when I was in school and kids are happy to learn. They're excited to be at school and um. They're healthy and I think that that's what matters more than more regulations. And that's all I got.
And tha- thanks for the public comment and uh. Uh, Xandra, uh, there is one oh nine uh participant, one hundred and nine participants uh at, at the moment. The peak was one sixty-five. Then later on in the hearing, it fell down to, you know, one twenties now at one oh eight. You're welcome. Uh, if you'd like to provide public comment, please enter your uh name and title into or affiliated organization if applicable into the chat box. Um. And also if, if others have already covered your public comment, um, th- there is no need to provide a. Duplicative public comment. Uh, written public comment may be sent to rules coordinator S B E. At K twelve dot W A dot U S. I'd like to call on Greg DeRuce, uh, if I pronounce that right, hopefully, uh, who is a teacher.
Yeah, I just, uh, my comments, um, I, I just think that we should just leave everything the way that they are right now. Um, because we have a lot of people at our school that are uh. They're comfortable with, uh, what's going on and they like the teaching and uh they just want to have it just. Pretty much status quo. It's for the safety of the kids and for the education and, and that's what we wanna just keep it at.
Thank you for your public comment. If anyone would like to provide public comment, please enter your name and if applicable affiliated organization into the chat box and we'll call on you. Written public comment may be submitted to rules coordinator S B E at K twelve dot W A dot U S and that's uh in the chat box for you. Matthew Alfred, please provide public comment when you're unmuted and ready. Thank you.
Yes, hi. Are you able to hear me okay?
Clearly.
Okay, um, I would just say that my comment that um. I believe that uh. It seems reasonable to have a, a set standard of education uh across the board between uh. Public and private schooling, but that anything uh regarding uh. Curriculum uh or anything regarding uh methods of teaching. In my experience with my family, uh currently enrolled in private school. The way it currently is, has been doing a fantastic job. And I don't see any need for any uh. Just uh. The option of choice is, is a very privileged one and a fantastic one and um. I don't see any reason for that to be changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for participating and providing public comment. If anyone else would like to provide public comment, please enter your name and if applicable affiliation into the chat box. Jen Kay, please provide public comment uh and affiliates as a parent. Jen, if you're attempting to speak, uh, we can't hear anything. There is an unmute button for you to click. It looks like a small uh stand on top of the desk microphone. It says mute below it. If you're experiencing technical difficulties or connection problems, uh, written public comment may be submitted to rules coordinator S B E. At K twelve dot W A dot U S. And Jen, we cannot hear any uh volume from you. I'd like to move on to Sarah Grace, who is identifies as a teacher. Please provide public comment.
Hi, um, I'm a fifth grade teacher and I just feel as though we don't need additional rules and regulations in our school district. Um, our kids are thriving and doing really well. Uh, they're healthy and um I think that it's really important that. We um do our best to accommodate our kids according to. This is really sad. Um. I guess accommodate our kids according to their uh needs. I would say emotionally and physically as well. I don't feel as though implementing additional um. I don't know. Rules and health policies is gonna be beneficial for those kids. We saw a significant decline before when we had to social distance and mask up and do different things. And um, we're just now starting to recover um from what that did to our kids, I guess. We're still trying to play catch up.
Thank you for your public comment. If anyone else uh wishes to speak, please enter your name and if affiliate, uh, if you have an affiliation. Uh, also into the chat box and we'll call on you. Um. And by now I've made a number of calls for uh additional public comment. Uh, we'll plan to close out at four P M uh or just, just a moment before it. Um, if there are no uh remaining public comments in, in the box. Uh, next up is L Brady. Please begin public comment.
Hi, my name is Laura Brady. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm a parent and my children started going to pu- uh, private school this year. Uh, because the public schools were completely, are completely unable to meet their needs. And we have found more flexibility, more uh academic rigor. In the private school sector, we are paying thousands of dollars out of pocket. Because Washington State refuses to allow vouchers, which is ridiculous. And the money should follow the student. That's how it should be. That would fix so many problems with public education. If they would just allow the money to follow the student and then public schools would then have to. Kick it into gear and do better so that people would want to stay in public schools. This seems like an attempt to force people to stay in public schools when you go after private schools. The reason why we pay money out of pocket is because we feel. Private schools meet the needs of our children better. And so we, we want them different than the public schools. That's why we're paying. Money out of pocket is because we want something different. If you force private schools. To be exactly the same as public schools, then that completely ruins the private schools. We want them to be different. We want them to be able to provide what a public school can't provide. So. Adding more rules and regulations is only going to. Further hurt children in public schools and further hurt their educations. And I completely disagree with any new rules and regulations being put. Onto private schools. They have been doing a good job and you need to leave them alone.
Thank you for providing public comment. Uh, as mentioned, uh, we're, we're closing the public hearing at four P M. Um. And. You know, typically entries to provide public comment are provided ahead of time on a sign-in sheet rather than uh, you, you know, throughout the meeting. Um. One second regarding closure, closure of the public hearing. Okay, so at this point, we're going to hear the last two remaining uh entries. Any further entries into the uh Zoom chat box? Um, it's too late to sign up for uh the public hearing. So I would like to call on Francis Zuniga. Uh, who worked in public uh schools for twenty-eight years. I apologize if I mispronounced the name. Please provide comment.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, my name is Francis. I worked uh in the public school district for twenty-eight years. And I have six grandsons and four of them have had to go to um. Private school because uh of the garbage that's being taught in, in public schools. Um, all those years that I worked with uh students uh in those twenty-eight years. I, I could never have imagined trying to teach them the stuff that you guys are trying to teach them now. It was hard enough to get them to understand academic work. And um, all the other stuff is just confusion and not, it should not be in the hands of um anybody outside. The household in their home. Uh, we aren't China. We shouldn't be, uh, the government should not be getting involved in. People's children's uh or, or coming into our houses is how I feel and. Taking over and telling us what to do and how to do and teach our children. Uh, it's our responsibility. Your parents had the right to teach you what they wanted. And the same should keep going on. It's a mistake to uh try to. Run families and schools according to what a few people think. Um. Soldiers died to, to keep our freedom and so that we are free of speech or religion. And it should, and if you guys still believe in freedom.
Please conclude your public comment. Um, you, you've gone well past a minute.
Okay, well, I'm just saying the government needs to stay out of all these places and, and pay for the. Private schools if they can't teach the right things in public. Thank you.
Thank you for participating in your public comment. Um. And then the final person to provide public comment is Lindsay Cassie, who is a parent. And then uh, once Lindsay's uh presented, uh, we will close the public hearing. Uh, and as a reminder, written public comment may be submitted to rules coordinator S B E at K twelve dot W A dot U S. Uh, Lindsay, please do.
Thanks for letting me share. Um, as a parent of three junior hires that are currently in high school, it is extremely important to me that I have. All the same what my kids are taking in in terms of education, in terms of moral teachings, in terms of um. Problem solving skills and that is lacking in the, in the way that the current public schools are. Communicating with parents, the literature that's being given out, all of that is um not allowing me to. Have the control that I should have as a parent over what my kids are taking in. Um, so I have had the option of private school and it has been a lifesaver uh for our family and for the way that. Um, I have every intention of raising my kids um until they graduate.
Thank you for providing public comment. So public comment um began at two P M and has gone uh over two hours. So we're gonna close it now at four oh four. P M. Thank you all so much for participating in uh open government and providing your feedback uh for the board to consider. And I hope you all have a good day. Uh, the public hearing is now closed.